This is the type of building that we're proposing. As you can see, it's an attractive building. It's not, it's not something that is not going to be obtrusive to the neighborhood. And as I said earlier, I think we've addressed the traffic impacts that this type of operation would impose. And I think in summary, it's our position that the traffic from this site, although different, would probably have less of a direct impact than a fully occupied office building at that location. So that's the summary. What we'd like to do is, as we move forward, I imagine you'd like to hear from your traffic consultant as to some of the conditions. If we can come to closure on traffic at the next meeting, handle the site circulation and other issues that I think would be of importance.
Sounds good.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Jeffrey Dirk with Madison Associates, the board's transportation consultant. So the attorney provided a good overview kind of where we've been and kind of where we're at at this point with respect to our review. As you might recall from the last meeting, we did have some questions, asked the applicant to go back and provide some additional information, specifically with regards to the amount of truck activity this site would generate, which they've provided to us. And we've checked those numbers and confirmed that they're accurate and what we would expect for the size building and the number of loading docks that you see that they're proposing here. We also asked them to look at the distribution of traffic, so how it's going to arrive at depart from the project site and to take a look at how it might vary if they considered truck distribution patterns with respect to how they completed their analysis. So they've done that, and the variations are somewhere about, somewhere between 2% to 5%, which is, from our standpoint, it's not significant in terms of that level of impact or change in terms of their analysis in the traffic study. Wouldn't impact what they're reporting in terms of delays, queuing, or overall impacts of the intersection. So if we're generally above 5%, that's when we would expect to see that there might be some changes, but the variations they're talking about are not significant with that regard. So lastly, the things that we've asked them to look at deal with really getting to the focus of the recommendations for the project. So there are a couple of things in terms of what we've provided back to them for comments on the recommendations they have. The first thing was respect to the traffic monitoring program. So I think what the traffic monitoring, what the intent of that really is to do is, you've heard from the applicant, you've heard from me in terms of verifying the findings, but really, the proof is when they build the project and the amount of traffic that's generated by it. The post-development traffic monitoring program, the purpose of that is really to ensure that they stay within bounds. So everything they're presenting to you, everything I've reviewed, they need to go back after the building's occupied and demonstrate that they're within those bounds that they've developed for the traffic parameters for the project. So we've provided some comments on that monitoring program. And what they will actually do is, within a month, within the first year of their occupancy of the building, they're going to go out and do traffic counts at the driveway. And then not only going to count the volume of traffic entering and exiting the site, they'd also be looking at how many trucks are coming in and out, and then the directional distribution. So if they said so many trucks are going north on River Neck Road and so many are going south, they're going to actually document that. And what we require that they do is a part of that analysis, and this goes back to the variation I talked about. Typically, what's done in monitoring programs is you get a 10% variation. So any of the numbers that they presented in the traffic study, what we've said is they can't exceed those numbers by 10%. So if you take the numbers, multiply them by 110%, they can't exceed that value. So it gives them some variation in terms of those traffic volumes. And again, as we look at the variations, you know, if they're generating, let's say, you know, 300 trips on a daily basis, 10% would mean they could be over that by 30 trips. So that's not a large volume when you consider over 24 hours. That's the level of activity that they're talking about. So we've set up a monitoring program. And again, the applicant needs to review our comments that spells out exactly what they're to measure, how they're to measure it, and then what that variation is, and then how the reporting goes back to the town. And I think the key thing of it as well is that, okay, well, if they're above 10%, what happens? The monitoring program lays that out as well. And the whole goal of those corrective actions are really get them back in bounds so that they're not having those exceedances. So the result of this will be a report that gets provided to the community planning director, but also goes to the town's traffic safety committee. So the information is being reviewed by various groups. We've also included the provision in there where the planning board obviously would get a copy of that and that the board reserves the right to retain an independent review consultant at the applicant's expense to review that and provide recommendations. So it's kind of a checks and balances thing that to the extent that the board gets comfortable and approves the project, this would go in as an added measure to say, okay, we got comfortable with this, we approved it based on the information that's provided to us. This provides that check and balance back to you, not only one year, but two years out as well. So it has some life to it, so you're getting some feedback on that. So that's the first part of the monitoring. The other thing that you also saw is two conditions relating to offsite improvements related to, or actually three related to offsite improvements. The first deal was, as you might remember, we were talking at the last meeting about the high crash rate at the Stedman Street intersection. There are some improvements planned for that intersection, but they're going to happen far off in the future to the extent that the state funds it in the year 2026, I think is what they're estimating. But the design plans are still at the preliminary stage. So we've structured or suggested a condition at that location that says, to the extent that the applicant seeks an occupancy certificate before the state advances those improvements. So if Mast Dot's not out there building anything, surveying, or anything like that to advance that project, and they're looking to seek an occupancy certificate, we've suggested a level of improvement that the applicant would undertake at that intersection. It's really to address safety. As you look at the crashes, and one of the things we'd ask them to do is develop a crash diagram so you could physically see where are all the crashes happening in the intersection. And if you look at it, you see some patterns. There's a lot of rear-end crashes happening on the Stedman Street Northbound approach. So that's indicative of some things that are related to the operations of the traffic signal. So again, we've suggested the applicant, here's what could be done to fix that problem. There's also crashes happening in the intersection because it's skewed. So the alignment's not great. So you see vehicles having angle crashes because they're not aligned properly in the intersection. So that leads to improvements of signs of pavement markings. So we've also suggested that those are things the applicant could undertake. So the condition related to that intersection is basically, as I said, if Mast Dot's not out there doing anything and the applicant wants an occupancy certificate for the building, then there's a series of improvements that we've recommended that they would undertake. The same thing with some traffic signal retiming. So at the signalized intersections, they're currently operating or have movements that are operating over capacity, so today. So you can't add any more traffic to those movements without causing them to trip over into conditions that would go over their design capacity. So they need to be retimed. And so we've suggested that, as a condition, the applicant undertake those timing improvements. The difference between what the applicant originally suggested and what we're saying in our comments back on it is we want the applicant to do those improvements. The applicant had suggested that they, they're fully willing to contribute monies to Mast Dot to undertake the improvements. The problem is Mast Dot, number one, they can't accept money. They can accept a project. And so even if the board were to impose that condition, Mast Dot's going to say, thank you, but no, thank you. We can't take those monies. We want someone to build us something. So they can accept the project, they can't accept the money. So that's what they would turn around in request of the applicant. There is sometimes some confusion because I know sometimes it's felt that because they're state-controlled intersections, the town and the applicant has no control over making improvements. And Mast Dot would go through their typical review process and issue a permit for the applicant to undertake those improvements. So that's what we've suggested. The condition would have to have a provision, and I know the attorney would require this as well. It has to be subject to Mast DOT review and approval. Because if the applicant goes and tries to do these mixed best efforts to undertake these improvements, and Mast Dot says, you know, thank you, but no, thank you, the applicant can't implement the improvements because the state retains the jurisdiction. So the applicant would need to have the ability to come back to the board and say, we, you know, made best efforts. Mast Dot said no. Here's a letter indicating their denial, and here's the reason why. So they would need to be able to have that provision because, again, that's not under the control of the applicant or the board. But the board can require that the applicant go to Mast Dot and obtain our permit, make best faith efforts to do that. So that deals with Stedman Street, and it deals with the signal retiming. The other item is the River Neck Road improvements. So the applicant, as he, as they had presented at the last meeting, they proposed to have this committee develop some improvements and then put some money in escrow to implement those improvements. So I think between myself and Evan, there are some additional comments relating to the improvements at that location. So that's really the high-level overview, kind of where we are. We're not, we haven't requested any additional information from the applicant. They provided enough information for us to be able to develop these suggested conditions of approval for the board to consider at the appropriate time. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have now or later on tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, Beatty. Let me bring it around the board just to see if there's any questions. Henry?
No. Fantastic job. Thank you.
Thanks. I do have one question. Thank you for coming tonight. Right out of the starting gate on this report, it talks about the post-occupancy traffic monitoring which you started as well. Isn't that like the horses out of the barn after the building's built? And then how does the town have recourse, and the neighborhood have recourse if they're not following?
So basically, they'd be in violation of whatever approvals you issued because you're issuing an approval based on what's been presented to you. So a certain building size, and in this case, a certain volume of traffic that's associated with the project. So to the extent that they're exceeding any of those thresholds, they would be in violation of the permit because they would therefore then have unmitigated impacts. They're generating more traffic, and it's a more intensive use than what you've intended. So they would be then in violation of what you've been issued in terms of a permit for it. And I think that the idea of having this monitoring program also gives you that additional mechanism to be able to call them back in here to the extent that they're exceeding what those requirements are.
Is that pretty standard throughout the state?
They're on warehouse-type of uses. That monitoring is typically a standard condition that's put on that. And it really has to do with that, the item that we were speaking about at the last meeting, which is the four different types of warehouses. And I think as you read more and more on the paper, which you're seeing, these continue to evolve in terms of the robotics and things like that that go along with these facilities. So it is standard that a monitoring provision, particularly with respect to warehouses, it's not uncommon that they're in there. Mast DOT requires it. So there's monitoring for, if you're on a state highway and you have a project that exceeds certain thresholds, then you would have a monitoring program. Mast DOT requires it, and it lasts two years as the minimum, five years is more typical for Mast DOT monitoring. But they have the right to, if they require five years and you just are consistently hitting the baseline number so you're not exceeding, they have the right to throttle that back and say you don't need to do the monitoring. But it is not uncommon that you do that. And we recommend it for the warehouses just because you want to know. If you don't know who the tenant is, you want to be able to get that feedback so you can catch it early.
Deirdre?
Thank you for your feedback. So I guess, you know, I think it's a very hopeful and detailed analysis. But some of the things that are related to traffic, you know, the impact on the road, the presence of a sidewalk, the safety for children at a bus stop, they're kind of peripherally traffic-related, but they're not really addressed by this, the scope of this analysis. And like, those are more my concerns. And I'm wondering, how would you recommend? I'm sorry. I guess I'll start at the beginning. I, this analysis is more about the number of cars per hour, the number of cars at a given intersection, the number, the amount of queuing and delay. But the more peripheral aspects of traffic are my concerns, those being the safety of kids at the bus stop, the noise impact of trucks down the street, the impact on the street and the infrastructure of the street, you know, kind of breaking down by more heavy machinery, impact of trucks. And those aren't really addressed directly, and those are more my concerns. So I don't know how to get those addressed.
No, and they're, I wouldn't say they're directly related to traffic, although those, although they may not be directly presented in the analysis, they're directly related. So two pieces of that. The first, I think, is continuing to work on the River Neck Road corridor study or committee that the applicant's going to undertake. Because I think that and the outcome of that, in terms of what the desire of that committee and that study is really to talk about the things that you're mentioning, which is, what are the issues today? What about this project may exacerbate those issues? And then ultimately, how do we fix that? And so the applicant's committed to establishing that committee, having that dialogue, identifying those improvements, and then putting funding towards those improvements. So I think that, that's how that, some of those items would be addressed, is really the study, the identification of the improvements, which would include the neighbors and town boards, and then the funding of those improvements. So whether it's sidewalks, road improvements, signs and markings, traffic calming devices, all of those would be an outcome of that study and the dialogue that would be had. And then the applicant would provide funding. That condition is one of the conditions, I think, that even in speaking with Evan, and needs to have some more work done, obviously with input from the board, to structure it in such a way that the outcome of it is what you're looking to address, specific to River Neck Road. The issues with respect to pavement conditions, and this comes out a lot, especially when you have heavy truck traffic that's on the roadways, or commercial vehicle traffic on the roadways. It is true that commercial vehicles do generate more wear and tear on the pavement than a passenger car just because of the loadings. A properly designed roadway and cross-section of the roadway in terms of the depth of pavement and everything that's there is designed to support properly loaded or vehicles that are loaded within the legal limits of, for travel on those roadways. So presumably, we have to assume that the vehicles will be within those legal limits. So they should not do any more damage to the roadway than a passenger car would because those, the axles on the trucks are purposely made to spread the load out as those points of the tires where they touch the pavement hit the asphalt. So again, to the extent that River Neck Road is properly designed from the pavement surface down, it should be able to accommodate the legal load of trucks on those roadways. You know, that being said, we do want to make sure, again, as a part of the monitoring program, that their truck numbers stay within what they're estimating for the project site, which is not a large volume. Because given the number of loading docks they have, they cannot process, you know, a large number of trucks. They only have, I think, 42 loading docks at this point with the site there. So with the trucks...
That seems like a lot to me.
It does, but when you think about the fact that not all 42 trucks are going to arrive at the same time, they'll arrive over the course of the day. And then it takes a significant amount of time to unload a tractor trailer. They're actually very large once you get inside them. So that gets back to the point of there's only a certain amount of product that can process in this facility, given the size of the site at a time. So, you know, generally, from a 42-loading dock facility that they've got here, they're probably going to produce, I think we've estimated about 150 truck trips a day. It's 75 in, 75 out. Because the amount of time that it takes to process those vehicles at the site is, you know, it's about, that's about all you could process in a day. They just can't store the product, given the size of the building that's there. But again, what we want to do is make sure that monitoring program keeps those in those boundaries. The other piece of the monitoring will be time of day. So to your point about, you know, one of the trucks coming and going, and how does that relate to school time? Because I think that's, you know, that's always a key thing as well. That, that will be documented as a part of the monitoring program, and maybe something to be discussed as a part of that River Neck Road study or just the board's discussions in terms of wanting to make sure that during the school time periods that that level of activity related to trucks is minimal, if at all.
And when you've done studies of similar projects or on similar projects, have you, has it been your experience that localities have limited either the number of docks or the hours? I mean, pretty dramatically, like, sorry. Is it customary to limit the docks, the number of docks, or, and/or the hours?
I have not had, hours of operation are always something that's subject to the town's, you know, jurisdiction. I have not had a project where the number of loading docks have been limited. I would say that, you know, to the extent that you're comfortable with the project as presented to you, then you stick with, basically, you get 42 loading docks. And if you want 43, you need to come back and tell us why you need the second, you know, that additional loading dock. More in that nature of, we're approving this building as presented to us based on the numbers that it presented to us, and to the extent that there's any intensification, be it adding a loading dock. Another thing that we had talked about before at the last meeting is no ability for trucks to be able to drive in or through the building because that's a different type of warehouse facility. So things like that. If there's a, if there's a change to the layout of that building, such as adding loading docks, or we would suggest the ability for a truck to drive through the building, that signals to you that there's a change and that there's something going on with respect to potentially intensity, and you'd want to see that back.
Thank you.
Mike? Yeah, I find the notion of continuing monitoring very intriguing and quite positive. But I, I have one area of concern, and I think perhaps Evan might be best at addressing this. If we were to find ourselves in a situation in which the parameters were being exceeded substantially, from a practical matter, not from a theoretical point, from a practical point, how would we regulate that? What could we actually do to force a change? And what would we likely to do?
Beyond the 24 months, as Jeff is indicating, the town would have to be doing monitoring.
Okay.
And if you've been following, like, select board meetings recently, select board's been discussing that specific issue with asphalt plants.
Right.
And the town is actively, through the police department and the assistance of NIMCOG, systematically doing traffic counts that capture truck traffic versus vehicular traffic. So that would be, that would be the way, the manner in which the town would proactively on a continuing basis do proactive monitoring.
Okay, so assuming we did proactive monitoring and assuming we found something that exceeded the parameters, then what would be?
So then, so then it would follow the same traditional course of zoning enforcement. That information would be given to the building commissioner, who's also serves as the zoning officer. And that position is responsible for enforcing the planning board decision and conditions. So again, as Jeff is indicating, the plan, all planning board decisions clearly articulate what is being, what is being approved. And in this particular case, as I heard Jeff say today, 150 trips, 75 in, 75 out. So if they, if there's an intensification of that over time due to a change of use, change of tenant, modification to the building, all of those are items, as you guys know, are clearly articulated in your decision. We reference the application, their narrative, their reports, the plans, the elevations. So if something drastically changes that resulted in an intensification, the decisions that you guys draft and sign today would provide that, would provide that, you know, that clarity and legal framework.
All right. Well, that makes some sense to me. But I've got to say that our record, over time, of turning the screws hard enough to actually make any changes is pretty slim. And now, I mean, suppose, and I'm just going to give you a hypothetical. I'm not, please don't, don't assume that I'm saying that town officials or boards would actually do this kind of thing. But assume that the building commissioner decided he didn't want to have anything to do with it. Could the planning board require it? Or was it just, if he doesn't do it, nothing happens?
Not a good question. So my understanding is that upon written submission to the building commissioner, by law, he has 14 days to reply.
Yep.
A reply could be, I need more information.
Yeah.
But every time the building commissioner issues a written response, the aggrieved party can then take, take their case to the local zoning board for administrative appeal.
Yep.
So that's the local, kind of the local court, so to speak.
Okay.
Let's assume the zoning board upheld or agreed with the applicant and not with the aggrieved party. Well, then it moves on to, you know, to the court system.
Okay. All right. We don't have a lot of records in recent times of that kind of thing actually being done, do we?
So the building commissioner receives complaints and requests for enforcement on a daily basis.
Yeah, we get tons of them, yeah.
And they range on a variety of issues. What we're talking about here, and as you said, is not very common.
Yeah.
But there aren't a lot of planning board projects that have been built, that have been approved and built in which the operation or the site intensified drastically.
Okay.
There are certainly, and Nan knows this, over time, properties evolve in an incremental basis.
That's true.
But, you know, I'm not aware of any in Chumster that have risen to a level where a neighborhood said, I remember 10, 15, 20 years ago, planning board approved the project, and the way it is operating in 2022 is entirely different than it was approved in 1980. So I think that's, that's the, that's, I think, what we're trying to figure out here.
Right, yeah. You, I think you've hit that on the, right on the head.
Right, right. As Jeff is indicating, with specific conditions and cooperation with the applicant
Right.
and then the board and staff, I think we have enough experience where we know we can do it where we want to.
Okay. So, but so, but it can, it is a process that could be driven by the planning board itself.
Exactly.
If necessary.
Yep.
Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Yeah. So a lot of what Mike just went through was what was on my mind. And the truth is, from experience, I, I just don't, while I know the process is there, Evan, I, I don't trust that process very well in terms of the town having well-defined mechanisms for enforcement or the guts to actually enforce. So I'm really concerned that we control this at the site plan level as opposed to hoping for some sort of magic in the future over continuing monitoring and compliance. So one of the things I heard you say is that this really boils down to 150 truck trips a day.
Right.[1680.42]
And I look at that and what we have there now with Mercury was basically a defense contractor that was primarily R and D, manufactured small, small volumes on defense contracts. Probably had, with a small volume manufacturing, probably had an average of a truck a day. So we have an increase here through the neighborhood of almost 150 truck trips per day with this transition. This type of a project requires a special permit. And a special permit is in place to give the planning board the ability to evaluate not just is the project appropriately, is the project plan appropriately constructed technically? But is it appropriate for the site? Is it appropriate for the neighborhood? Is it disruptive to the neighborhood or does it fit in? And while the 129 corridor is by all means an excellent place for this type of facility, I don't believe that Riverneck Road is because to get to this property, either way you get there, you're going through extensive, um, residential areas. So I thank you incredibly, you've, you've absolutely enlightened us and it has made a tremendous difference in understanding this project. And I can't tell you how valuable it's been, thank you. But that's my comments.
Thank you.
I think I have a question for the applicant. I was at the first meeting with the neighborhood at Mercury. And there was one question asked in that meeting, I don't know if you followed up on it, about approaching the landlord directly across the street for access closer to 129. Have you reached out to them?
Those, those conversations were initiated and it's not possible at this time, but we did have discussions.
Okay.
Uh, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to, uh, I think Jeffrey did an excellent job, but I'd like the record to show that philosophically and substantively, we're in agreement with the changes. And one of the important aspects that people seem to be struggling with is a change. What would happen if there's a change in intensity and how do you enforce that? Well, it is the town's obligation to enforce. The, the applicant or the user has a, a major incentive to make sure that they are in compliance because otherwise they could get a cease and desist or lose their occupancy permit. And that's a major catastrophic, uh, issue, so there is a major incentive to stay in compliance. And also anytime there's a change in user, tenant, whatever, that has the likelihood of, uh, having any impact on the site requires that user to verify that with your building commissioner or perhaps even coming back to the, the board if there's a change in any condition, so you would have that loop. But in my years of practice, it's, it's an extremely rare event where a commercial user violates their permit to the point where it results in a termina, a termination or a uh, a cease and desist because that is catastrophic for the operations.
Um, Erica, do you have any comments?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
You have something, Jeff? Do you have?
Nope.
Again, uh, thank you for your time, I appreciate it, it was very thorough.
Thank you.
You've answered all my questions on the traffic, Mike?
I just want to ask one question, Jeff, I don't mind my mic. My mic will not, might not be working, but I'll talk louder. Um, you said 300 trips and then you later said 150, 75 each way. So what are they proposing here? I'm, I'm a little confused, is it 300 trips a day or is it 150? Because I just want to get, or maybe the applicant can answer that, what are you anticipating for truck traffic?
The 150 was the daily truck volume, so that, but so then you've got employee traffic on top of the truck traffic. So the, the 150 was just the trucks. What we had asked the applicant to do is to break those numbers out so that you'd be able to have the benefit of trucks plus employees. Uh, what they had presented to you, uh, at the prior meeting was the total volume and we've asked them to separate out. So the 150, 75 in, 75 out over the course of the day is just truck trips?
It's just trucks.
Yeah, about 10% of those truck trips that happened during those commuter peak hours, so it's a small volume during those time periods, typically with, with the kids are, are out there maybe waiting for the bus in the morning, but still it's added truck activity, so it's, it's not the, not the, um, make those numbers sound so small, they are small, but again, they're, they would be out there when the, when the kids are out there, but it's a relatively small amount.
And non-peak hours, what do you consider non-peak hours?
Uh, so in the, the, um, non-peak hour would be after nine o'clock in the morning and uh, after six o'clock at night or before four o'clock in the afternoon. So the peaks are basically, off-peak is between, let's say between nine and, nine in the morning and four in the afternoon and then after, um, six o'clock at night.
And before seven o'clock in the morning?
And before seven o'clock in the morning.
Okay.
There, there is, and the town does have the ability to have what's known as an hours of darkness restriction on heavy commercial vehicles, um, to the extent that the town wanted to pursue something like that. Um, the state does have, the state does have, um, specific requirements and the town can apply for this, that you, that you can restrict truck traffic on roadways, but the only restrictions can be put in place, they're, um, put in place by mass DOT, the town can't universally do it. You apply for a restriction, a heavy commercial vehicle restriction, and the two criteria are, are complete restriction, which is rarely granted, or an hours of darkness restriction. And hours of darkness restriction is typically applied on a residential roadway. Uh, so the town does have some ability to implement those type of restrictions on Riverneck Road, let's say. Um, so then what it would do is in terms of restricting, it, it cuts both ways. What it does is it says, you're not going to have the trucks running during the hours when it's dark, so it gives some relief. What it also does is to the extent the applicant, you know, they have to run a facility here, it puts all the trucks in during the daylight hours, so they've got to get that, those number of trucks in there. But the, there is the, um, ability for the town to apply for an hours of darkness restriction.
Great, thank you.
The hours of darkness restriction, can that be placed on state numbered routes? In town? The hours of darkness restrictions, can that be placed on state numbered routes in town?
I believe if you undertake a study to demonstrate that, that there's a need for that to be put in place and that there's an alternative route. Um, and that alternative route has to be wholly located within the community that's requesting the restriction. So it's one of those things where you could apply for it, but it's your, what you'd be doing is you're pushing the traffic. But then, if it's on a state road, you could be potentially pushing it someplace else. Because what the state says is you can't tell trucks that they can't use state numbered routes. You have to provide to them a viable alternative. That viable alternative has to be wholly located within the community, so you can't send it to Tingsboro or something like that.
So we can't get rid of the traffic from the asphalt plants at night that rocks our plumbing?
On 120, on a state numbered route?
On 110.
And, yeah, unless you, unless you provide an alternative route.
But it's exactly the same problem. Because it's, it's large truck traffic in a residential area.
But, but you can make application, the state has specific criteria that the application needs to have when you submit it. The hours of darkness restriction typically not on state routes is, is a very easy threshold um, to hit, especially if it's a residential roadway, because the primary, primary abutting land use is residential. And there's a certain level of truck activity on that road, uh, then you can, then you can have that restriction granted. The total restrictions are very difficult to achieve.
Okay.
So just, uh, to close this out, on, uh, you're making these assumptions on the fact, like, on a busy end of it, right?
Correct.
Okay. Would be like Amazon, but it couldn't be Amazon, you said, with the size of the?
No, and, and to, to the board's point of wanting, you know, as you're shaping this project, as you talked about, loading docks and parking spaces are easy things to control what's going to happen at the site. If the zoning enforcement officer went out there and saw cars parked on the grass, they're in violation. So there's very easy ways like that that are, that you, as you're looking at the site plan, that you can control the intensity because again, if they're presenting 42 loading docks and their analysis is based on that, that's it. If they come to you and say, you know, we, we only want 300 parking spaces, well, based on what they've got there for that use, the intensity is going to be set by those number of parking spaces and the nature of the use that's there. So it starts to be self-regulating and then it's very apparent, as we said, if there are trucks parked all over the place or cars parked on the grass, the, the building spec that just needs to go out there and it's obvious, or anyone driving by would say, this is more intensive than what we planned, and then just call for an enforcement.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your time. All right, is there anyone, do you guys have anything else before we open it to the public? Is there anyone from the public that has, you want to come on up and state your name and address? Do you want to come on up and state your name and address, just so we'll go through the speaker and they can hear it on TV? Thank you.
My name is Jerry Marco, I own a company at 20 Industrial Ave in Chelmsford. And, uh, coincidentally, it is a trucking company. Uh, you know, 150 trucks over an eight-hour day is like 20 trucks an hour. That's a truck going by kind of a residential road every three minutes, just to put it in perspective. And my concern is, do we know if this is a single-tenant, uh, warehouse or is it going to be a multi-tenant warehouse? My concern is, I mean, Amazon is traveling all over the world here. And if Amazon were to come in, uh, it's not just the traffic that I'm concerned about. Anybody who owns a small business, their employees are in jeopardy because Amazon has a tendency, because they're big and they're very wealthy, to come in and give bonuses and try to attract employees to their location. And that's being done all over the state, New England, et cetera, et cetera. So my concern is, I don't know who the tenants are, but if it is somebody like an Amazon, I think it does more damage to the town of Chelmsford than good. So I just wanted that to be taken into consideration. Uh, you know, I run six warehouses in the local area. I decided to bring my, uh, headquarters to Chelmsford. And, uh, it's working out very good. I just hate to see an overabundance of traffic, because I'm right there, in that neighborhood. You'll see me having 15 to 20 trucks leave in the morning and typically in the afternoon, I'll have those trucks come back. And I operate out of six docks. So when you have 42 docks, I know you're saying 150 trips, 75 out, 75 in. I don't know what kind of companies they're, they're going to have there, but those truckloads are going to fluctuate based on the economy, based on business, et cetera, et cetera. So that's a lot of traffic for Riverneck Road and I just, uh, just wanted to share my, my input with everybody here. No disrespect to, you're trying to do it, it may be fine, but those are my concerns if it is a company like Amazon. Uh, there's more issues than, uh, just traffic. But I really believe traffic on Riverneck Road coming out onto 129, et cetera, et cetera, would literally be a nightmare. And you've got Apollo Drive, you've got all those companies that I think are vacant right now. Do a better job in getting people in there because I'm a moving company. But, uh, once those are full, traffic is pretty intense on that 129 area. Once those buildings are full, if you add, whoops, sorry, if you add 150 trucks going in and out, I don't think anybody realizes, that is a disaster, that is a nightmare situation. And once you're in it, I think somebody mentioned here, there's no way out of it. And so I just wanted to voice my opinion, again, no disrespect, but those are the issues that I have.
Thank you very much for your time. Next up?
My name is Armin Jeknavoyen, I live at 5 Bailey Terrace. Uh, before I start here, I just want to say, change is very important for a town to grow. We like change, but how we change is very important. Um, the word fulfillment center has been used, it's been said to us that this will never be in Amazon, the building isn't built for it. On Friday, May, March 18th, Channel 5 posted on their website a new, um, Amazon same-day diff, uh, service. 155,000 square foot facility opened in Bridgewater at 10, 15, 1025 Elm Street. This is going to be a facility where you can order and within hours have your product delivered to you. Um, it's going to have, sorry here, uh, with a new fulfillment center in Bridgewater, you can click purchase and have your order land on your doorstep within hours. Amazon is going to have 2,200 full and part-time workers at the Bridgewater facility and experts, uh, expects to hire an additional 300 workers as it scales up. A company spokesperson said the fulfillment center will deliver as far north as Boston, south as Providence, and west as Mills. Um, that facility is called the Cabot Commerce Center. Looks just like the design they have here, and I will email this all to you. Amazon has, well, the building itself is 250,000 square feet, 32-foot clear heights, 65 loading docks, true drive-in doors, tilt-top construction, LED lighting, 42 trailer spaces to be parked, and 385 employee parking spaces. Amazon uses 155,000 square feet, 25 loading docks, 25 trailer parking spaces, and 160 parking spaces. So this may not be fulfillment center, how do we know this will not come to Chelmsford? Um, the way this works, like I said, order at midnight to 5:00 AM, have your package between 7:00 and 11:00 AM. Um, if you look at another article, there's a market, a book called The Industrial Market Report, Quarter Four. I'll email this to you as well, this describes what's going on in the area. Warehouse housing and flex warehouse housing is exploding. Amazon's building a 3.8 million square foot facility in Andover right now. Um, the Davis Companies purchased a property in Everett, Massachusetts and quote-unquote, they're going to turn it into a 220,000 brand-new last-mile distribution facility for the property. A quote from the article says, "The Davis Companies continue to invest in properties and communities that offer last-mile opportunities and Everett is a good location." How about Chelmsford? Could we be a good location for this facility? Do you want this in Chelmsford where a person can click? And in two hours, a person will come to their facility, pick up the item, and drive it to wherever it has to go. So it's not just truck traffic we have to worry about bringing the items, but it's cars coming out. It's not a million square feet, it's 155,000 square feet doing the same work. And it's not just Amazon. Staples, any last-mile distribution facility may want you to come in here. How can we prevent this from happening? Do you want 24-hour cars going on Riverneck Road, 25-hour trucks on Riverneck Road? It's not safe, it's not conducive to my neighborhood and our neighborhood. We live there, not these corporations. You can put your restrictions in place, so many cars, so many trucks, but what if they do exceed it? What are you going to do? Which company do you know in this world would say, we could only have 100 trucks a day, but we want to make more profit? Does it make any sense? Restrict it now, stop it now, don't let it get out of hand. Let's put in a life sciences corporation. They put one in Billerica, Davis Companies, put one in Chelmsford. Let it do something similar to what Mercury had that fits the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Chris LaValley, Town Meeting Rep, Precinct 4, 10 Edgewood Road. The applicant said tonight that the, all of the issues, um, that the residents and the board brought up were addressed in, in the recent report tonight. However, there were two address, uh, issues that were not addressed that have been brought up multiple times. The first one is sidewalks all along Riverneck Road. The sidewalks in the, um, presentation tonight only went to the edge of the property. The other issue is the other end of Riverneck Road that still has not been addressed in this traffic report. It is highly unlikely that there will be zero impact to that end of Riverneck Road. Unless you have a police officer standing there directing traffic, at least one truck will make a wrong turn, especially if they're making a delivery to UPS. So please insist on the traffic report for that end of Riverneck Road. My second point is related to the, um, trucks per day. The trucks per day was noted as 75 entering, 75 exiting, majority during off-peak. And it was noted that the peak was 7 to 9, 4 to 6. Well, off-peak is right at school bus time. 3, 2, those are the school bus times for that area. So that's right when the likely increase in, in truck traffic is going to be. Also nighttime is off-peak. I want to get back to the ITE codes. Because as we heard tonight from the previous speaker, the Bridgewater, uh, Amazon plant was just announced. Now, that was touted as the first of its kind facility for Amazon distribution. First of its kind, meaning the ITE codes haven't yet been applied to this type of facility. It's the first of its kind, it's also almost the exact same specs as this project. So I would request, again, that another study be done with the, the ITE codes of either 155 or 156 that matches the Amazon Distribution Center. We need those, we need to take a look at what the worst case could be. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that there's another example in Milford, 1 National Street. 294,000 square feet, 75 loading docks, 290 parking spaces. The proposed project anticipates occupancy by a transload short-term warehouse tenant. However, as requested by the town, this supplemental traffic evaluation focuses on potential impacts associated with a parcel hub warehouse use. They requested a second traffic study. They requested a second traffic study because they weren't sure what was going into that flex warehouse. So I ask you, please, request another traffic study that includes the other end of Riverneck and this new, this new one-of-its-kind type of facilities. The other thing to point out is that when that plant was being built in Bridgewater, they actually reduced the parking that they were asking for because it was too big for their use. So they actually had a bigger parking proposal that they actually reduced because they didn't need it. So Amazon and all of these companies are finding ways to be more efficient in smaller spaces that are more distributed around towns like ours. Please, let's get the study done and see what it could look like with that type of facility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Buckley, Precinct Six Rep. Let's say good evening to the board tonight. I have questions. This is going to be a twenty-four-hour-a-day hours of operation, because we know, and the answer you'd know too, we never found out the hours of operation from that 110 paving. They couldn't go into the archives, could never find out how that was approved. And another thing, how much of this traffic study was dedicated to safety? Pure safety. Safety of the residents of Riverneck Road. I traveled, I used to travel, I grew up in East Chelmsford. My heart goes out to the residents. You got them squeezed at UPS. Now you're going to put a mini Amazon. How many trucks are going north that have to get on the Lowell Connector that are going to get down, up at that end of town? I've lived in East Chelmsford, I live in Chelmsford my whole life. Those roads are not made, they're all, technically, farmers aren't concerned, they're all farm roads. Those roads aren't going to hold the weight. Does the Chelmsford Police have scales? Who's going to weigh, we take their word that they, the trucks won't be overweight? I don't, I don't know. There's families, you know, regardless of the zoning of Riverneck Road, let that go. People in single-family homes live there. They walk their kids along the road in carriages, people jogging, and now you're going to have this mini Amazon. I don't get it. And the town officials, those elected and those un-elected, they should be concerned about the safety aspect of this project. And I think it's a bad deal for Chelmsford. That's all I got to say.
Thank you.
Kara Kolf, 23 McFarland Road. I want to echo a lot of what he just said about safety. Riverneck is a narrow, windy road. It is not going to be safe in snow and sleet with trucks coming down it at a serious hill. I haven't heard anyone address the fact that we literally just narrowed where Riverneck meets 129. I don't see how those trucks are going to make that corner anymore. It used to be big enough for them, but we just made new sidewalks there. And the point about sidewalks all the way down Riverneck is important because they're making what feels like a bad-faith offer, because they can't offer sidewalks during, for the whole of the road. They can only offer sidewalks on the land they own. And we discussed in the last traffic meeting that the road is too narrow and you can't just take people's front yards to make sidewalks. So as he said, we walk our kids down this road. And the school buses, three, right, the high school buses, the middle school bus, the elementary school bus, take up several hours of the day. It's not just like a one-time, pick up all the kids and they're gone. You're going to see kids waiting out there for several parts of the day, and in the winter, as you know, it's dark. So the kids are going to be standing on a dark street corner while trucks are coming out. And as you guys have said, and I really appreciate hearing you say it, forty-two is a lot of loading docks. And a hundred and fifty is a hundred and fifty more trucks than I hear right now. This is really not a very busy road right now. If I go out for a morning walk at 7:00 AM on Riverneck, I might see three cars, not an entire warehouse worth of trucks. And I don't think that asking us to police it, or saying, okay, they get a 10% wiggle room. So we might as well accept right now that that means that there's not going to be a hundred and fifty runs, there's going to be a hundred and sixty-five, right? And then, at what point, over is a hundred and sixty-six too many? Is a hundred and seventy too many? At what point are we going to get upset enough? And then it's on us to come to you and say, "They really are doing more than they said they were going to. And then they've invested all the money already." As you said, it's already, it's already done. They're really going to fight us if they've already got the money invested. So I don't really see that as a good position for us to be in. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm not against the Davis Company. I think they're a quality outfit. And I'm not against fit-out centers either, because I think they serve a purpose. But I am against this particular project in this particular section of town, and I have several reasons why. You know, I like the picture of the front of it, it is an attractive building, but it would have been nice if accompanying that, there was a picture of the truck docks to see what that looked like. I'm guessing it wouldn't look quite as nice. In 2015, in 2016, I ran for the Board of Select. One of the things I did was to work heavily for the adoption of the B A O D. I worked in the trenches, I worked with the Economic Development Committee, I worked with the Planning Board. And it was a major change for the town. And Evan Blansky, to his credit, did probably the yeoman work, laying out all the boundaries, all the rules, and so forth. And he paid particular attention to the area on Riverneck Road and spent a lot of attention there because he recognized, as did other members in the town, that this was a residential neighborhood that also had an area which was industrial. And that that particular area needed particular rules to watch over it so that the boundaries were not laid out to be an impediment to the residents who enjoyed life there. And I think he did a quality job. It was brought to town meeting. You know, part of the, his job is to sell it to town meeting, it was recommended by the Planning Board. And town meeting, usually doing the right thing, approved the B A O D. However, the world has changed since that came about, and no one envisioned what a fulfillment center might bring to the table. It wasn't envisioned in terms of particularly Riverneck Road. If it was on 129, most of the arguments would go away because that's a heavily-traveled road, it's a well-built road, it's wide, and so forth. Riverneck Road is not that. And if it were, if the B A O D was being brought to town meeting now, I think there would have been a lot of thought about maybe restricting the one type of business that might go in there which would produce a lot of trucks. So, you know, again, in hindsight, sometimes things change, and I think this is one of them, and needs to be considered on this particular project. Another reason is the town tried very hard to limit truck traffic associated with the Westford Asphalt Plant. They spent a lot of money with lawyers, they spent a lot of time, the various boards got involved, one way or another. And the goal was to restrict truck traffic. All those attempts failed. And if you ask any of the people on Route Forty, if you ask any of the people on Ledge Road, they would tell you that they are overburdened with truck traffic. And I believe that this project would create the same kind of situation. The difference is, we were trying to restrict truck traffic coming out of Westford, where we had no control over what they do. In this case, it's Chelmsford. The whole project is in Chelmsford. And Chelmsford should have a proper say in restricting truck traffic if it's a detriment to the community. And so I think you should take that into consideration. You know, it was brought up that, you know, there could be some sort of vehicle restricting. You know, ask the people up on Ledge Road how that's worked out for them. It doesn't work out at all. There is no restricting. And then finally, there was brought up a situation where who monitors things after the fact? And I think there's been a number of times the Planning Board has kind of brought that up in recent times. And it hasn't really worked out that way. We don't have enough resources. You know, if this facility goes in and they're generating X amount of tax dollars for the town, and everybody seems to be happy with spending the money, and then there's some infraction, nobody's going to do anything to stop it at all. You know, they might get a little slap on the wrist, but that's about it. So saying that nothing's going to happen after the fact if they decide to change things, history tells us that is not going to happen. So again, for all, for these reasons, you know, I urge you not to approve the project. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you don't mind, just make sure you state your name and address so they have it for the record.
Katie Melville, I live at 6 Monmouth Street. I first had a question about trucks versus cars and wear and tear of the road. For most of the reading I've done, it has indicated that trucks cause about a thousand times the damage to road versus a sedan. But today we heard that if the roads were properly designed, that they are pretty equal. And so I guess I'm wondering, is Riverneck Road properly designed and how would we know that? And I don't know who could answer that, maybe the gentleman who, you know, presented the other traffic. Is there any thing we know about that?
So there's no way to know for sure other than obtaining records of the design of the road that the town might have, or physically doing coring of the road to see what's out there? That's the only way you can know if it's properly designed?
What about all the patchwork from the potholes and things? Can those still be considered properly designed if it's just patchwork?
I don't, I don't, you can just say to us, I don't think he can give you an answer on that, but I would agree with you that it's probably not.
Okay, thanks. The next point is, again, about safety in the trucks. My kid's bus stop is on the corner of Monmouth and Riverneck Road. I have a map, I'll send you afterwards, to show you of the blind spot that's there for when my kids have to cross over a lane of traffic to get to the bus. Using Google Earth and some measurements, it looks that the distance from where my kids stand to where the corner, the curve starts, the blind spot, was measured at about a hundred and sixty-five feet. I did some research about how long it takes cars to stop versus tractor-trailers going to a complete stop at different speeds. For a car to stop going thirty miles per hour, I've seen estimates range from ninety feet to a hundred and twenty-three feet. For a tractor-trailer to stop going thirty miles per hour, there were ranges from a hundred and twenty feet to a hundred and seventy-seven feet. And anybody who lives along this road will tell you that nobody drives thirty miles per hour. So I also looked up the numbers at forty miles per hour. And at forty miles per hour, it takes a, an eighteen-wheel tractor-trailer to take, it takes about two hundred-plus feet for it to come to a complete stop. Considering the curve starts a hundred and sixty feet or less from my kids, you know, and that's also assuming that the truck drivers are well-rested and they react right away and all of that. Plus, I have videos that I wanted to send to the Planning Board later that shows just what it's like when you're standing there and you see cars just popping out of nowhere around the corner, and just try to imagine what that would be like for a tractor-trailer. I tried to get a video of the tractor-trailer, but they just don't come by. So I wasn't able to do that during my weeks here, standing at the bus stop. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Georgie Muller, 114 Riverneck Road in Chelmsford. I have a different thing I'd like to present. Prior to Chelmsford becoming MBTA community, a 40B project was informally presented to the town, wasn't, didn't go through to people in Town Hall. Well, now, we are a MBTA community, which means we have to have seven hundred and fifty units minimum of housing. And figuring that out, because including the North Chelmsford Project, which has been approved, the town needs fifty acres total. Surprisingly, there's a little over thirty in North Chelmsford, this lot is twenty. As an MBTA community, it no longer has to be a 40B. It can be market-rate homes, as long as they're multifamily. Ten percent would be affordable, but the rest can be market-rate. Has the Planning Board, or has Davis Company, looked into, now that things have changed, potentially using this lot, since you have the money invested in it already, and as you said, something's going to go there? I think the town would probably be more willing to work with housing than trucking. The buildings that are there now could potentially be converted to apartments, which has to be less expensive than tearing them down and building a whole new building. They could potentially add Ls off of them, they could add townhouses around them, to get our units up to what they're supposed to be. If we don't meet the MBTA guidelines for family housing, the town will lose funds from the state, from the Housing Choice Initiative, the Local Capital Projects Fund, and/or MassWorks Infrastructure Program Funds. We lose money by not putting housing there. And we're not gaining a lot by putting a warehouse there. If there are residents living there, they're paying real estate taxes. They're paying excise taxes on their cars, which I don't think these trucks are paying that are going in and out. Again, it would not have to be a 40B, it could be market-rate. Mercury computer-generated significant traffic, and the town would be willing to accept that level of traffic because it would be predominantly cars. Would the town consider making that an overlay and including multifamily to work with the Davis Company? Because the residents might be more likely to work for that than we are a warehouse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Delaney, 22 McFarland Road, Chelmsford. So I just wanted to bring up a couple of other items here that, I mean, I think Mr. Diggs put a pretty, went forth with everything that's going on on the road and Riverneck Road and residents. But hadn't been brought up yet was the fact that there are residential homes. We have a, we have trash stopped there every Wednesday. So we're going to have the trash trucks stopping along the route because it's a residential and they have the right to have their trash picked up. And we have trucks now that if we turn around and have a truck every ten minutes, and it's going to be on that time period on that Wednesday, you'll have trucks going there. And I think we should do the daylight one if we're going to do anything, because I run trucks twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and keeping his hundred and fifty that he's looking for, and having a truck every ten minutes. Now we're looking at a truck every three minutes. So it's going to take a little while to get trucks through, or the trash is being picked up as well, to go along with the school buses. Now, we say the school buses in his off-hours. Well, I was traveling down Golden Cove the other day, and we're looking at all the cars all backed up, trying to get up to Riverneck Road. But what they're doing is they're turning, they've got to go to the center of school, drop the kids off. We put, there were a couple of trucks that were there, it was nice and convenient, the trucks were there. And then you see the trucks move up, and everyone moves up nice and slow, big gap between the truck and the next car. But they're not getting out on the road, just waiting on the light. Now they swing down left, if anyone's coming down left, they're going to hit that light. But as they turn left there, the light now changes and comes down, down from center. So we have this backup of anyone trying to get out on Riverneck Road, turning left again. Our problem is we don't have enough time. He says twelve, ten minutes, ten seconds for a truck to turn left? Trucks coming, cars coming down off by the cemetery. In ten seconds, you can't see them on the corner coming from Riverneck, here on Riverneck Road, trying to take a left. You don't see them coming around where the cemetery is. It's ten seconds. That's the amount of time you've got from the time that you could first spot them to when it gets on to Riverneck Road. Because they travel around forty, forty-five miles, they're all there. Anyway, just a couple of observations that I looked at as we were talking about this. But I know right now we're stuck on just the traffic study. And I think, as has been stated before, the traffic study wasn't complete, they didn't do Riverneck Road on the other side. There's no talk about the sidewalks. Anything that's been brought up that's going to be addressed is after the fact, it's all post, or I think that we should be addressing these things prior, since we know they are already existing. So another study might be best for everybody to be put in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Deary, Precinct Six Rep. I found it very interesting, I wasn't able to come to I found it very interesting, I wasn't able to come to the last meeting, but I watched them all. And almost everything that this gentleman said about the traffic with the trucks was true. And because I've been watching them, I will get into that in a minute, more and more. I was unaware that we could limit the weight of the trucks. And that was going to be one of my requests this evening. Because after living in my home for 47 years, I am now seeing tractor-trailers carrying cars. This is something new. But he said in response to the large trucks, the freight trucks, he's correct. They come before 7 o'clock in the morning and they return after 9 o'clock, and then they continue to about 3, 3:30 in the afternoon. The weight of those trucks, there are numerous, they are heavy. And my request tonight, because the first meeting I stood before you and I asked that you do a study on my street, I don't mean at the corner, I mean on Stedman Street. The only reason why, or one of the reasons why, we haven't been able to limit the trucks on Stedman Street is because it's the link to the city of Lowell. Those trucks from the city of Lowell, and I do go down Wood, and I go down Drum Hill, they are taking Westford Street Lowell and they're continuing up Stedman Street. It seems to be the new cutoff, because they don't wanna go on the highways. Stedman Street's the new road. Well, if this goes through, I'm gonna have to sell the house, because it's that bad now. The houses are shaking more than ever, there's more trucks than ever, and the thought came to me when I was on Wood Street Bridge the other day, when they do the Wood Street Bridge, where is, where are they gonna go? When they closed Route 3 overpass on Stedman Street, the bridge, they closed it for six months and repaired that whole bridge in six months. And it was because of the link with the city of Lowell. And we could not stop the trucks. Originally, as you remember, we had an illegal sign on Golden Cove to stop the truck traffic. The town of Chelmsford did that. And somebody fought it and they said, oh, it was illegal, they took the sign down. And that's when the trucks even started more. There was a recent death on Route 3. That was recent. And it was at 2:30, 2 o'clock in the afternoon, somewhere in there. And I had taken my grandson home, 495 to Westford, and I came Dalton Road and I was heading home. And I got to that intersection of Dalton and Stedman. Stedman Street was full, both ways. Subway Street had a truck on it, a freight truck. Dalton, as far as I could see the opposite way. Those roads were backed up till 7 o'clock at night. That doesn't include Chelmsford Street. So we start talking about this many trucks in this area. No, it doesn't have to be Riverneck Road. I know Riverneck Road very well, I go to the cemeteries all the time on that road. So I know it well. The area that's getting the trucks is my area. I counted, I've been counting, if you can get four cars through the intersection of Chelmsford Street to, on a left-hand turn to get to Stedman Street, you're lucky. Four cars and the light changes. And if you don't move fast enough and they're flying down the hill, the car behind you blast their horn. Because I've had it happen more than once, but I'm not gonna get in front of somebody to make a left-hand turn to get killed. The weight of the trucks, someone said to me that our police department does not have a weight, something to measure the weight of the trucks. Is that true, sir? This, would it have to be the state? All right. I, I don't believe that we do. Is there any way that we can find out with the weight? And can we limit the weight on Stedman Street? Because these freight trucks are gonna be full that are coming through. And if they're coming from New Hampshire, which they might, because Tinsborough and New Hampshire seem to be cutting my way, they probably would be going to this warehouse. People avoid Route 3 as much as they, what they can. But the weight of those trucks, water pipes are not new. Our sewerage, as you're well aware, is not new. And that's why we're starting to replace our sewerage, because it's not new, the pipes are old. And I know, because it happened to me, the pipe from the street to the house you own. It was a very expensive venture. What about the, the pipes on the street? And there's gas lines. My street isn't made for that type of traffic either. I know Riverneck, no, road isn't, but neither is Stedman Street. And we're getting all the trucks. So when you leave Riverneck Road, you can either take 129 to the center, from the center you can go 110, Route 4, Route 27. Can't continue down North Road. You can go 495, or you can take Stedman Street. And a lot of these trucks now, currently, are taking Stedman Street. And I'd like a traffic count, but it's the weight of the trucks. I wanna know how much weight these trucks weigh? If there is any way that we can limit the axles maybe with the weight of these trucks on my street? I would really appreciate it, because I asked for this before, but the more and more, I don't know, how much does a tractor-trailer with six cars on it weigh? Neither do I. This is something new that's transpiring on Stedman Street.
I appreciate your comments. You all say?
Yes, I wanna know, can we, I don't know, who do we apply to or who do we appeal to, since we own that street, to limit the weight?
That's a good question, Evan. Select Board, Select Board.
So I have to go before the Select Board and request?
Yes.
Stedman Street?
Yep.
To limit the weight of the Riverneck Road?
Tonight.
Pardon?
We're talking about a separate project.
Yeah. Let me, the Select Board is who you wanna see, okay? Thank you very much. Next up?
Good evening, Sheila Pichette, Precinct 10. First of all, I want to tell you how much I appreciate these hearings. They're extremely informative and well worth it to anybody that's listened. I, I believe that all of the information presented by the citizens of Chelmsford about this project have been absolutely outstanding. They've gone into specifics that many people never would have thought of, and that's appreciated as well. I've also learned that there are many questions about this project that cannot be fully answered. There are just too many questions for a positive project to move forward, in my view. I'd like to say that I have seen, in more than one state, warehouse facilities housing large numbers of trucks. These trucks on the highways are ruling the areas where they are. I don't want trucks to rule or ruin Chelmsford any more than they are currently. There have been several, at least several, study committees suggested for this project, some of them after the fact of a building being built, which to me makes no sense at all. But the reason that I have seen in the past many times that study committees are, are started, is because there's a problem. Well, there's a lot of problems with this project. And that's why there are numerous studies being asked for, in my opinion. There is absolutely nothing that I have heard or that I have seen on presentations that even with the proposed mitigation will improve our lives in Chelmsford. There is nothing that I have seen, nothing that can't be debated, and absolutely, I, I appeal to you to vote this project down. I do have a question about, do you have counts of comments at these public hearings in total by any chance? A rough estimate?
Do we have what?
Comment, number of comments? The total number of comments?
Evan, do we?
I have input.
We would have to look.
An approximate? 100, 200?
We've had three hearings, maybe 30, there's 30 people in the audience today, there were 50, so maybe, maybe 60 to 90 comments?
Yeah.
So probably about 100 in all, anyway. I'd like to know if you remember any of the comments being positive for this project?
I can't answer that specifically, no.
You don't know?
No.
I have not seen one?
I don't think so.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that proves a point, that the community does not want this project. And I look to you as our planning board for planning our future, for planning an abundant future, for planning a positive future. This project speaks nothing to that. This is no place for such a project. And I strongly urge that you see that even after the mitigation, the project would still be degrading the surrounding neighborhoods and our community of Chelmsford. Thank you very much for all your work.
Thank you.
I'm on repeat, but I just wanted, Jeremy Marco, 20 Industrial Ave, Chelmsford. They were talking about the weight of a tractor-trailer. It varies anywhere, an empty tractor or trailer can weigh anywheres from 11,000 to 13,000 pounds. You can easily add 10,000 pounds onto that, depending on what's in it, even more. So you could be easily talking about a 20,000-pound tractor-trailer load, just to give everybody kind of a quick idea. Thank you.
Hi, Eric Finney, 8 Clark Ave. Thanks, everyone, for your questions and comments. And I thought, like, tonight was probably been the best discussion we've had so far. I just wanted to, I had emailed you prior to the meeting, just to kinda supplement some of the comments and examples of smaller warehouses in the area. There's actually one that I drove past recently in Littleton. It's actually a great spot, it's right next to the highway, you can see it. It's like, it's in 495 and the Route 2 area. You can see it from, well, you can see it from the highway. But anyways, the, the square footage of one of the small buildings is approximately 141,000 square feet, and there's a second one that's under 100,000 square feet. So in total, it's, it's a little bit less than what's being proposed. I'm not sure if it's classified as a fulfillment center or just, or like a what it is, I didn't look into it, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention. And it kinda highlights what I mentioned in a previous discussion about the trend of, you know, e-commerce and, you know, to have these, like, a, a network of warehouses, it's a kinda cut back on, you know, travel costs, you know, gas is expensive right now. And also it's like a reduced time. I mean, there actually, or if you go out there on the internet, you'll find articles that, that, that point this out, and it's already been mentioned tonight, but I, I did forward you that. Another thing about the concern about the bus stops, was also mentioned about the waste management pickup, but you also gotta consider the mail deliveries and, you know, the other deliveries, because you have a lot of homes on Riverneck. So it's a narrow road, as you know, you know, how's all that gonna work? So, so, so safety to me is like a, a, a big issue. And it just seems like in listening to a lot of the questions that you're asking and not just yourself, but the residents and comments that are being made, you know, we've talked about, you know, well, you know, like, we can have an escrow account to help pay for, you know, improvements to intersections and sidewalks, and, you know, we need all these special permits. And it's like, why are we, why do we need all this to, to help, or like, to, to allow something in? I mean, it just, it's already been mentioned, but it just raises the questions, like, why are we trying to allow this in here? Like, what, why would we wanna approve that, if you have to go through all this? And I don't see it being monitored, because that costs the town money and town budgets are tight, you know? So I just wanted to comment on that. And I still don't have an answer, I've asked this before, about like, does anybody have an idea, like, what's gonna be allowed for hours of operation? A Clark Ave is right next to the property. I can hear the highway, the highway was there when I bought the house, it doesn't, you know, I don't like it, but I tolerate it, because I knew it was there when I bought it. I have a lot of concerns about after-hours and weekends. I spend a lot of time outside. I garden, I bike, I walk my dogs, I, I run, I'm in the neighborhood. You know, I'm in Apollo Drive, I'm down on Monmouth, I'm down at the other end of Riverneck Road. And I can tell you, spending a lot of time on Riverneck Road, as windy as it is, I've had some close calls. You know, I feel fortunate to be able to stand here and talk to you, you know, some of the close calls that I have, you know? So I, I just, you know, I, I don't see that continuing if we're gonna allow a project like this. I, I think the activity of the residents on this, in this area is gonna decline, we're gonna have to go elsewhere. And so I wish you to really consider the impact on the residents, and I think you have a tool at your disposal in the 129 overlay zoning. There, there is a zoning bylaw in there that, that says, you know, projects shall not, you know, disturb or be a detriment of residents and other businesses. So I wish that you please consider that, and a lot of the other comments that I totally am, am, am behind from the other residents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Latino, Precinct 4, soon to be Precinct 9 Town Meeting Rep. And 15 Jesse Road is my address. I did speak at one of the previous meetings, and I'd like to define myself as somewhat of an expert. I've moved 46 warehouses in the last 10 years. I looked for a warehouse in the Chelmsford area about nine, nine or 10 years ago. I looked at 11 warehouses in the area, all the way from Littleton, where they have some big warehousing in an industrial area, up into Andover, where we finally landed. That was a 40,000-square-foot building, and we had four dock doors. A lot of folks don't understand logistics. I do. I had a warehouse in Scranton, PA, out in the middle of nowhere, and the great thing about it was it employed a whole bunch of people. They used to do coal mining there and they had no businesses going on. It is the biggest warehouse for Gallo wine on the East Coast, covers from West Virginia all the way to Maine. All the wine that you have in your stores here came out of that Scranton warehouse. The other end of the warehouse is visible from space. It has about 300 dock doors and it covers Walmart for the whole East Coast. So from, from that background, I can tell you that trucks driving up and down Riverneck Road will have a couple of different periods when they come. Receipts are done in the daytime, in the morning, between, between the hours of light and about noon time, you bring all the receipts in. Cross-country trucks run about 40, 40, 45,000 pounds, a little bit bigger than the Sterling trucks you heard described. Those are more regional trucks. You put up to 22 pallets on a, on a full-size truck, and if it's got 45,000 pounds, it's probably got some heavy stuff in it. You have feathers and lead, they used to laugh about that, feathers and lead on a truck. You wanna try to dim out the truck, that means dimension it, fill it full, fill it up to the maximum weight that the highway will allow you. It's very regulated. Our truck that ran from San Antonio up here to, up to New Jersey, I put two drivers on it, because you have regulated hours, you can only drive for 10 hours, and then you have to switch drivers and keep going. We want to move fast, that's what you do. A lot of the drivers don't get tired anymore, they park down here at the Chelmsford Rest Area. If you wanna go see them, you wanna see a truck, there's- Area, if you wanna go see them, you wanna see a truck, there's thirty of them tonight at 3:00 AM, they all park there and sleep. They have no place to go, the bathroom, a lot of them, that's a problem, but they can drive ten hours, and they have to sleep for ten hours. So they go do their deliveries, and then they go do pickups. They do pickups in the afternoon up until six or so at night, and the UPS and quick delivery companies come racing in there, because they have to race back to Hanscom over to drop off the FedEx boxes, to fly it to the middle of the country, and then on to San Francisco, wherever they're going. UPS, we've got a good advantage there, they're nearby, so did my plant in Scranton. It was nice. Potholes in that parking lot were unbelievable, it, it would eat a car, because you're driving, in that case, you were driving fifty trucks every couple of hours through the parking lot and on the streets. Yeah, yeah. The last thing you want, in my opinion, is fifteen to twenty dollar an hour workers in that warehouse. This warehouse will have forklift drivers, you have pickers and packers. There's no way you're gonna have five hundred cars in the parking lot, no need for it, five hundred cars, that's ten, I guess you have forty-two doors now, isn't that nice? We, we cut that down. You have about ten workers per dock door, not a chance in the world. We might have an ability there to put robots in there, iRobot down the street, and, and the Amazon companies now use robots instead of people, so it's less expensive. Doesn't solve the truck problem. The truck problem is fifty-three foot trucks driving in and out of River Neck Road, I drove it today, about thirty miles an hour. It's a scary road for a car. I'm looking at a driver who doesn't know how to get in and out of there, who's probably pulling out his cellphone, they're not allowed to, but they're looking at this or the sheet that they just got from the warehouse, scary. There are oopses that happen in warehouses, like the time we blew the hoses on the dumpster out back, and we had ten gallons of fuel, of, of oil, hydraulic fluid running into the parking lot down the drain. Oops, we accidentally stored a whole bunch of corrosive materials in the building, flammables, poisons in the building. This all happened, I've done it, I've seen it. I cleared out buildings, scary stuff in some of them. Some of the drivers don't quite speak English, they don't know where they are when they're coming into town, they shoot up Golden Cove Road, down River Neck Road. There's a reason it's called River Neck Road, it's a sand dune, folks, there's a river down below it, about twenty feet down. That's more a sand dune, that road is not gonna support, let's call it a forty thousand pound truck. It'll support it for a while, and then it'll collapse. These are all problems for twenty, twenty dollar an hour people working in them, in an area that's residential, in an area, and it's perfect community area for Boston, we're gonna be the warehouse for Boston, because we're at the crossroads of 495 and Route 3? Bad idea. The lowest business entity in terms of revenue generation for the employees that work there that you can come up with. As far as third-party warehouses, been there, done that, got rid of twelve of them around the country that were owned by the big corporation with the logos that you saw the other, the other day. The third parties don't care who's in the building, but they get ten or fifteen different companies, and then they manage it. Lowest cost they can go in, fastest drivers that can get the stuff in and out. It's a huge problem. You have chemical leaks, you have stuff spilling, you have truckers that are either not knowing where they're going or get lost. It's horrendous, and this area is the worst possible area. Places where the best warehouses are, South Jersey, they took over farmlands and built warehouses this size. Up in the western part of the country, they, they took over areas way away from the city that are on the main intersections, that's why this is so interesting. 495, Route 3, fantastic, now we call that the Northwest Crossway or something, Expressway. It's very enticing to folks that have done this in New Jersey, New York, I can tell you for sure. We do not want it in Chelmsford. You have the responsibility to take care of these folks and their kids. If you put a granite curb along that whole thing and a sidewalk, I guarantee you, you're gonna see black marks of the double-tire trucks bumping over the edges around that curb, and God help you, any one of you, if you lose one of these kids to one of those trucks not paying attention and doing that curvy road like I did today at thirty miles an hour, up, over, around. I suggest everybody drive it a couple of times during traffic time, and then like I did, mid, midday. You can't drive a fifty-three footer in there, and you sure as hell can't drive forty of them a day. Thank you.
Hi, Karen Kowalski, 18 Carter Drive, which is off of Golden Cove Road, which I imagine is gonna be the major cut-through for these trucks that have to hit 495 south or north. And I just wanna say that it is a family neighborhood, we have five streets, multi-generational families live there, and it is gonna impact coming and going to our homes. Also, in consideration, I know we have the center school over there, the schools, the kids wait for the school, must, just like everyone else is mentioning, on River Neck Road also. And also, that is, the fire trucks usually go down Golden Cove Road to go where they need to go, so it, it's gonna be a very congested area, just, I just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, thank you very much. Does anybody else? Anybody on Zoom, Evan?
I don't see anyone on Zoom, great to meet you. They are, they are, great to meet you. I'm on the phone, it's in the road.
Hi, Kathy Genovizian, from Moore Street in Chelmsford. I just wanna kinda wrap up everything that's been said and make sure it's out there. One minor thing ahead of time, though, is there are no speed limit signs on River Neck Road. Does anybody know what the speed limit is on that road? Just out of curiosity. I guess what I wanted to say is that these reports, they're thorough, they're very good, I mean, I read through them as much as I could, being a non-technical person, but the thing that I see there is that they are purely analytical, there's no reference to the effect on the quality of life, to the area, the neighborhood, as well as the community. And what is it that makes this project good for the community of Chelmsford? I haven't heard or can think of anything that is a positive for our town. I guess the, the bottom line is, this type of facility with so many unknowns and so many requests for variances should not be approved. We're trying to force a facility into an area it does not belong. I have mentioned once before that if the Davis Companies would even be willing to, whatever, Chelmsford does not have any really good senior housing facilities. That would be a great community area for senior housing. It's beautiful campus, there's some buildings there that could be turned into apartments, there's room to add some other amenities that would be good for seniors. It's just a thought that I would like to throw out, and thank you.
Thank you. All right, um, did you wanna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the comments, and what I would suggest is that we use the time to finalize the traffic conditions that we've spoken about, incorporating perhaps some of the issues that we've heard tonight, to try to be responsive, and then at the next meeting, get into some of the issues that have not been discussed, which is the site itself, the characteristics that may answer some of the questions that were raised tonight, is how does this blend in with the community, and how are we going to try to react to some of the things we've heard? So there's only so much you could do to address the traffic, provide the protection, and then, and, you know, alleviate those fears, but I think for the record, we should get everything on to show what the project would look like, how the site circulation, what the site would be visible from the street, and those types of issues. And I know that, speaking to Evan, that you'll have some review, I think you lost your engineer, or?
No, we'll be doing a peer review.
Right. So what I would suggest, if it's okay with the board, is that if this could be continued to the next meeting, and if it, if we're not in a position to respond at that point in time, then we would notify you to continue, because I don't wanna waste your time or the audience's time, if there's nothing meaningful to discuss.
Okay, so, all right, well, then I'll, I'll give you a motion to continue until the, when's our next regular?
April 13th is your next.
April 13th? And then we can, we can negotiate from there. Second?
Second.
By Deidra, all in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Hi, unanimous. Okay, thank you, thank you for your time. What do we have next?
I think, what we have, that, it's, uh...
Yeah, we have no, uh...
No minutes this evening?
All right, no, so, I mean, we, next meeting is April 13th, we could take, oh, I didn't even get to say it.
Yes.
While we have a second, I just wanna say congratulations to Henry, I apologize, I meant to say this first, but you were a little bit behind.
He's done his time.
Nine years, congratulations, and thank you for your service to the town. With that being said, would you like to make the final motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, thanks, Henry.